Well, I'll call to order the Monday, February 3rd, 2014 regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission. And as is our custom, we reserve 10 minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment. Public may comment on any matter except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record is already closed. We generally limit that to three minutes. I have one request from Jennifer Yeh. So Jennifer, if you could come up and maybe speak into this microphone over here, you have the middle one over there, and state your name and address. Oh, this one right here. I guess they're all on.
Either one is good.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners, for time to speak. My name is Jennifer Yeh, and I'm the Chair of the Harlow Neighbors Association, and I will make a brief statement before leaving the meeting so as not to be party to any ex parte communications related to the zoning or designation of 955 Coburg Road. On behalf of the Harlow Neighbors Executive Board and the neighbors in the area of 955 Coburg Road, I want to state that any discussion by the Planning Commission regarding the zoning of this property would be improper and inappropriate while the Luba appeal related to the zoning is pending. Further, any attempt to intervene with the City Council's consideration of initiating a Metro Plan Diagram Amendment process at this time would be improper and inappropriate ex parte contact with council members. The proper time and manner for the Planning Commission to be involved in this potential land use process is through the Planning Commission hearing and recommendation laid out in Eugene City Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. With that, I'll move on to Agenda Item 2, which I think Jennifer touched on in her testimony or her comments. And there were some requests among Planning Commissioners to meet, to discuss, perhaps issuing a summary or an executive summary to council related to both the Benson appeal as well as the Single Family Code Amendments. And so that is why we are here. So it is a council or a commission-initiated meeting, not a staff-initiated meeting. And I know Carolyn, you checked, I think, with City Council or City Attorney, rather, SEL Council regarding this meeting and regarding topics that we might discuss. Could you maybe refresh us on that?
Yeah, I did not bring that email with me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I can summarize. Basically, the only risk that the City Attorney saw, thank you, was if something were to come up in discussion that might demonstrate that individuals on this commission have a bias in any future decision that may come before you in an official capacity. There are two potential decisions that could come your way. The first is the zone change, which is currently under appeal up at Luba. And if that is remanded, it's remanded back to this body. And the Planning Commissioners, in order to preserve their right, in order to be a part of that remand discussion, would not want to demonstrate bias. And I can read to you what that looks like. I will say that this was not -- first, before I do that, the second decision that could come before you is depending on what the council chooses to do with initiating a Metro Plan Amendment. If they do initiate it, it will come before the Planning Commission. You will hold a public hearing, and you will then make a recommendation that will be forwarded to the City Council in that case. So those are the two official things you have come in your way. And again, the concern is demonstrating bias. The City Attorney doesn't have a huge concern about this, or even that big of a concern, I would say. They said that you have to be able to kind of set aside maybe previous decisions or discussions. And if, for instance, if a remand comes before you, can you act in an unbiased manner and look at the facts? And maybe I'll just read what the kind of definition of bias is so that we all kind of have the same understanding.
That would be good. Yeah, please do.
So, "Parties in a quasi-judicial land use proceeding have a right to a decision by an impartial tribunal. The standard for determining impartiality or bias is whether the decision-maker prejudged the application and did not reach a decision by applying the relevant standards based on the evidence and argument presented. If the decision-maker is so closely involved in matters, closely related to the application, that he cannot render a decision based on the criteria, then he is biased." Here's a relatively common quote that is often helpful. "Local quasi-judicial decision-makers who frequently are also elected officials are not expected to be entirely free of any bias. To the contrary, local officials frequently are elected or appointed in part because they generally favor or oppose certain types of development. Local decision-makers are expected, however, to, number one, put whatever bias they may have to the side when deciding individual permit applications; and, two, engage in the necessary fact-finding and attempt to interpret any and apply the law to the facts as they find them so that the ultimate decision is a reflection of their view of the facts and law, rather than a product of any positive or negative bias the decision-maker may bring to the process."
Thank you.
Questions?
Okay.
We don't have council here today.
Okay.
So we'll do the best we can.
Okay. Let's maybe start with Commissioner Baker and then Commissioner Borowski.
Yes. I sent an email about this. Given the concerns from my perspective raised by the City Attorney and also in that this is already being considered at Luba at this point, I don't think it's prudent or wise for the Commission to hold a work session on this issue. There's a serious chance of concerns raised by the City Attorney that would caution me not to participate in such a work session. So what I would like to say is I will accuse myself of this discussion, and I do not want to be considered part of a quorum that makes a decision. And if you just forward my concerns that I didn't think it was appropriate when you pass on any other information, then I'll just leave at this point.
Okay.
My question was, we have a City Counselor in the room. George?
Yes.
Just wondering if this is something you may want to sit out on. I know that council advised you that anything that you hear regarding this is it you may have to put out there. I don't know if you're sitting in here because of the Benson or because of the Single Family Code Amendments, but I know -- I don't know. I just wanted to ask him.
I think I do recall Glenn kind of cautioning City Councilors that once you've kind of decided to hold the work session to determine whether or not to initiate, that any discussions you have could be considered ex parte contact. That means you can't -- it means that --
You just have to declare.
You just have to declare them. And so it doesn't mean that you can't be here. It just means that you'll have to declare.
Well, okay. First of all, it's a public meeting.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And I mean, I could go home and watch you on the communication.
Yes.
But you'd have to report that to -- I think he just didn't want to put you in an awkward position as far as --
I didn't know if you were here for Benson or single families. Because single family, if we start talking about that, that's a whole different can of worms. And we would love to have you in here for that discussion. But I just wanted to check with you and see.
Well, obviously, I'm not in time, so I don't have a problem.
Perfect.
And he's not asking you to leave.
No.
I want to make sure that --
No, I just wanted --
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
It just will be something that you'll want to declare.
Yeah, just say, "I was at a Planning Commission meeting that it was brought up at, and it's a public record."
Right.
Okay. And then I think there were some Commissioners that -- I think my perception is the idea for this was to communicate to council what our decisions were. And I know in City Attorney's response to Carolyn, it was, you know, "We really need to keep it to the facts of what we have already discussed and decided and not open up any new discussion, but really just keep it to those facts." And so maybe Commissioner Belcher, I know you were one that was concerned about communicating this to council in maybe a better manner than just sending along a memo, so.
Well, I will just speak to how we can communicate. I won't share my thoughts on the issue. I hear what staff is saying, I hear what council is saying. I think certainly it's appropriate for us to make sure that the council is aware of our decisions. And by forwarding on our final decision on Benson and our recommendations on the Single Family Code Amendments, all we're doing is stating for the record, this is what happened. I would also suggest that either you or somebody else on the Planning Commission appear at those two events and say, "We're available to answer any questions you might have." And I think that both of those are both within the law and give the council an opportunity of benefit of why we made the decisions we did. And I would support that.
Okay. And I know I have volunteered to be available to come to that work session and be available for questions to represent the Planning Commission in our decision. So I certainly -- it's on my calendar and have that planned if that's -- I mean, I think that's just a work session with council, so I don't think me being there available to answer questions constitutes additional testimony?
No.
If I'm just conveying what we've already sent along? I just know, kind of jumping ahead maybe to the Single Family Code Amendments, it looked like in the council packet, it didn't also list what our votes were and what the straw polls were. I didn't see that in the packet that I downloaded.
For Single Family Code.
It was in one of the packets.
It was in one of the packets. Okay. And I know that was a concern that I had because we had talked about sending along what are, you know, like some of those straw polls because they weren't all unanimous.
And that is also for the Agenda Item Summary for the February 12th meeting, we will include that information.
Okay.
That has all of the different votes.
Okay. Because I know that was a concern I had as well as, I think, the Commission, just to make sure that we were passing along a little more information than just --
The nuances.
Yeah, some of the nuances related to that.
Yes.
Okay. So.
There is a -- on Monday's City Council meeting, there is a public forum.
Okay.
So there's not an opportunity to talk on Wednesday, but there is on Monday.
So --
I mean, typically what the council does at the Wednesday work sessions is that they aren't taking public testimony from the public in any fashion. It's pretty rare that they would look to the audience for other comments. It may for staff, but they typically don't do that, so I wouldn't expect they would be calling upon you at a Wednesday session.
Okay. Okay. And I saw Commissioner Borowski and Belcher, so --
Saw me, too.
Oh, excuse me. I did. I'm sorry, Jeff. No, Jeff.
I guess I'm pretty much in the same camp as Commissioner Baker. I'm very concerned about doing this for a number of reasons. I have a question first, and that is, we're worried about conveying our decision and the nuances of our deliberations to council. Is that in the packet that they're going to get? Is that -- what form does that information take? I'm playing catch-up here because this was a surprise to me, and I'm not quite sure what we're doing here, so.
For the Single Family Code Amendments item, we are definitely -- we have a record of that with all of the individual votes that were taken and the numbers, and that will be a part of the packet. Not -- do we have that similar summary for the Benson zone?
We don't have a summary as much because we have the final order that will be attached. So your decision, including all your findings, will be attached.
Will be attached. And I'm hearing that Chairman Randall is planning on being available to answer questions. Is that true, or is that a possibility?
Well, at the Wednesday work session now, I think what, Steve, you were saying is they don't normally --
That's not typical. I mean, not that they can't do it, but I think it's just -- I just want to give you that heads up that it's not normally the platform they use for hearing from the public at a Wednesday work session. So that's why we mentioned the Monday public forum, is if you want to have a chance to speak to them, you probably should think about Monday, not the Wednesday session.
Well, I guess my final comment is, you know, we're always working very hard to make sure that our decisions and our deliberations are, to use a pat term, "lube-proof" or can sustain. And my serious concern is, what we're doing here is we're giving additional grounds for appeal that then we'll have to defend. And I'm very concerned about doing more than you've just described, which is already in motion, I believe, to have information in a packet for the City Council and Chairman Randall available to answer questions. I'm not sure what else we should be doing, if anything. I think not anything.
I think Commissioner Borowski, then Commissioner Belcher.
Okay. So I guess a couple of points. First off, I know at the beginning of public forum, they always say, "You can speak to anything except for something that the record has been closed on or that there's a public hearing scheduled for that evening." So would that -- I don't --
Well, for the Single Family Code Amendments, it's a legislative process, so it's --
And other people spoke to it. That's how it made it to the agenda.
Right. So I think that's okay. And for the code -- or for the Metro Plan Amendment discussion, there hasn't been a record on it.
No, and yeah, like you said, there already has been.
Yeah, okay. So for me, I guess what I would like to convey to the City Council is basically, you know, this is the work that we've done. We went through the Benson thing, and we spent how many, two or three work sessions, went through 4,000 pages of this, and you have our findings. Now, if for some reason you decide that you want to do a Metro Plan change outside of that, that's your will. I mean, this is, again, this is my feeling. That's their will, and that's the political process, you know? If the elected officials feel that they want to change a designation of a piece of property, that's why we -- why they're elected officials. And they have that right, and they're going through that process. I think what we should tell them is that we followed what we felt was the law, and we interpreted it this way. And it's in appeal right now, but, you know, this is the way that we saw it, and these are the reasons why we felt that way. And that is presented in the final order that we put. Period. You know, if you want to change it, that's your prerogative, you know? And then on a personal level, you could -- and that's how we can stay standing as a Planning Commission. Then on a personal level, if you want to go and say, you know, "I don't agree," or "I do agree with what you're doing as far as Metro Plan Amendment, this is the reason why I agree or disagree with what you're doing there personally," I don't think that that should come as a commission. As far as Single Family Code Amendment, I would also follow the same logic, saying, "We've been looking at these amendments for months and months and months and had a very deliberative conversation around them, and these are our recommendations." The thing, though, that I would hope that we could put forward in that presentation is answer some of the things that were brought up right before the thing that kind of got the council to say, "Hey, stop, hold on, wait a minute." And go through those and say, "The reason we felt that the density thing didn't apply was this. The reason we felt that the alley access issue is addressed correctly in our vision is this. We're trusting staff that their numbers are true. We're not trusting an anecdotal thing. We trust staff with their thing." And go through the reasoning that City Council kind of said, "Whoa, slow down, we want to look at this more." And tell them, "We looked at it more, and here's what we found." Because that's, I think, what would be helpful to them in their deliberative process. Because right now, they've heard from neighbors, and that's great. We want them to hear from neighbors and get input from neighbors. But we also sat in public hearings and heard those same comments from the neighbors, brought them, staff answered those questions, and said, "Here's what you do. What do you think about it?" And then we deliberated on it, and we came to our decision. So I think that would be helpful to the council in the Single Family Code Amendment discussion. Find out what those issues are and present why we made our decisions based on the things that we have. That's what I've kind of been saying.
Commissioner Belcher?
Well, several things. First of all, I think it's unfortunate that we dropped the council buddy system, or frankly, council dropped the council buddy system, because we could be having discussions about these issues as they evolve and after we've made decisions. And give the council an opportunity to have one-on-one discussions, to have those more in-depth opportunities to share information. But we don't. I am also very concerned that we follow the letter of the law and not show bias ourselves. But I would ask staff, is what we propose to do, which is to, again, share our findings with the City Council and offer an opportunity for them to ask questions. Do you see any legal potential problem with that? So Commissioner Mills, I don't think we're doing anything that would potentially jeopardize us.
I guess I'm not sure. When you say "share our findings," aren't they going to see our findings? Whether or not we do anything here at this table today, they're going to see our findings.
They will. They'll be, you know, it's a long document, and it's attached as part of a larger thing. I think what I've heard Chair Randall talk about is an executive summary to maybe make them more visible.
And I think --
But yes, they will have them regardless.
And I think that's been my desire in this, is to really, you know, I know when we get information, and, you know, Commissioner Borowski, you know, mentioned how, you know, oftentimes we'll get thousands of pages of testimony, information, you know, those sorts of things. And to be able to have an executive summary that kind of hits, I'll say, hits the bullet points of the decisions. My thought was to not stray at all beyond what the printed recommendation for, like, Single Family Code Amendments, that recommendation summary, not stray from that. And also on the Benson topic, to not stray from anything that's not in the final order and to keep it very limited in the communication that way. I was not thinking there would be any comment or discussion whatsoever on a Metro Plan Amendment. That's not anything we have considered. It's not before us, and that's not germane to any of this discussion, I don't think at all. And so that wasn't even on my radar. But really, just to be able to communicate to council, and I think, you know, Commissioner Belcher mentioned, I am disappointed that we've not had the council buddy system in place. I think that would be a good way to, you know, keep that bridge of communication between the Commission and the council up. And I would maybe request that if there might be a counselor in the room that could put that forward, just because I think it would really help us feel like we have a little better means of communication with council on things that come before us that we then recommend, so that there's a little more depth to that recommendation, a little more understanding to that recommendation. And so I guess that's, you know, where I fall on it. If the Commissioners here feel that, you know, we just pass along what is already going to be passed along, I'm happy to be available for questions should council ask. I could go to the public forum. I'm concerned that if we're not feeling like we should do an executive summary, that actually testifying at that, you know, public comment period might stray from, you know, I know some of the concerns that Commissioner Mills and Commissioner Baker have, and so I would want to be really careful about doing that. But I'd also, you know, showing up at the Wednesday work session just as a spectator, I don't know that that really appeals a whole lot to me. If, you know, if there are questions and there's the ability to ask questions related to stuff, I would love that, you know, to keep the communication open. But, okay, I have Commissioner Belcher and Commissioner Mills. I think Commissioner Mills was first, so.
I guess I -- it's hard to argue against the logic and, I'll say, the need for some kind of summary or executive summary. And I guess I would ask, is this something that staff could prepare or would ever prepare? Or is what you have in mind, Chairman Randall, that the Planning Commission will prepare this? I guess I'm -- if it's something that staff can prepare as part of their staff preparations for this, then I have confidence that the staff would prepare an effective document for that purpose.
And that keeps -- I guess what I'm saying is, I'm trying to find a way to, if we want to give some kind of condensed --
You're pulling out bias, the potential for bias.
I'm trying to.
You're trying to.
The potential for perceived bias or for challengeable bias. It doesn't even have to, you know, we all know, perception or the opportunity for challenge is what'll be capitalized on here.
Okay. And maybe Carolyn, before you answer, I'll let Commissioner Belcher speak and let you think about.
Well, still trying to walk this narrow path.
Yeah.
First of all, I wonder, Commissioner Mills, if we allowed Commissioner Randall to prepare that summary and then ran it by staff to make sure that it worked and didn't create a potential for bias. Would that meet your needs?
You know, I personally am confident that Chairman Randall would prepare an unbiased executive summary. I have no doubt he would do his very best. But I guess where I'm at is it almost doesn't matter what I think. It's going to be the potential challengers to this and seeing the opportunity. And I'm wondering if it would be -- I guess what I would propose is the opposite, that staff prepare something for Chairman Randall to review. But --
Well, it seems to me in both cases, it will have had the review of both bodies.
Yeah.
I feel it would be stronger if we started it and they reviewed it. And then the same results would occur, i.e., both sides would have a chance to look at it, but then it would at least have been initiated by the Planning Commission. My other thought is, I wonder, again, I don't want you to sit in the audience on Wednesday and not have them recognize that you're there, but I wonder if staff could just state, "Commissioner Randall, Chair of the Commission, is in the audience, available for any questions you might have, should you choose to ask them."
Yes. Yeah, as far as kind of who would prepare it, I feel like this is really a Planning Commissioner-initiated discussion. Staff will absolutely be conveying the history of both of these issues and what the Planning Commission did. But if there's more that is desired by the Planning Commission, I agree with Commissioner Belcher that it's stronger actually coming from the Planning Commission. And I have checked with the City Attorney, and we'd be happy to review a draft of any such letter to make sure that it kind of meets that standard of not showing any bias.
And I did prepare a short summary, at least on Benson, for what I would consider an executive summary, getting the three pages, I think, of the decision down to pretty much one paragraph. You know, and perhaps, you know, we may want to trust council to actually read the final order, you know? And I know there's a lot of pages of information, and, you know, the final order, I think, really summarizes our decision. And perhaps, you know, the Benson final order and the Single Family Code Amendment summary with the nuances of our voting might be sufficient communication. I just think sometimes it feels like those get lost in the transmission translation, and I think that's probably why we're here today, is, you know, wanting to make sure that we feel we've at least been heard in our decisions. So what's the pleasure of the Commission, then?
I've got a majority meeting to make a comment if I can.
Okay.
What concerns me, I'm rejoining the meeting to make a comment on the Benson case. From my point of view, if the City Council wasn't having a hearing on a Metro Plan Amendment on that thing, we wouldn't be discussing sending some new executive summary to them because we made a judicial decision. It goes to Luba, doesn't go to the City Council. In other words, by doing this, we are automatically showing bias because it wasn't planned initially. Now, you could maybe make a case that, well, the City Council is going to vote on the Single Family Amendment.
single-family amendments and somewhere along the way in the past, we discussed providing, you know, more, you know, more capsulated results. But in terms of Benson, it really doesn't look to me like, it looks, from the outside, it looks obvious that it's biased because, you know, we wouldn't be conveying that information to them. We wouldn't. And the only reason we're doing it is because they are considering something else. And you could almost make the case for single-family amendments as well. If they are, I mean, they're going to consider those anyways, but because of some proposed changes that maybe they'll make, we have concerns. Well, that's their prerogative. Again, if we had done this a month ago and attached an executive summary, it would have been a done deal. But now coming and doing it because they are deciding on a metro plan amendment on some area that we made a decision, tell me that from the outside, that doesn't look like there's something funny going on. That's my concern.
Mr. Belcher.
I don't think there's anything funny going on. We have always offered our input to city council and they're acting on anything we've done, and that's all we're doing here.
And I have attended at least one other meeting prior and been available for questions. I was not asked any questions, but I was there.
I have been too.
Yeah, Commissioner Mills and Commissioner Borowski were there. So this isn't really precedent-setting in that regard, but I understand your concerns. And so is there a strong desire to send along an executive summary or to-
I'm going to vote against it.
Okay? Or to simply send along what already will be sent along? Commissioner Belcher?
I support sending an executive summary as vetted by staff to make sure that it doesn't indicate potential for bias for further decisions and that you make yourself available at both work sessions.
And I plan on being available at certainly the Wednesday one, the Monday night. I'd have to check my calendar.
Well, I meant both work sessions for single-family and for-
They're both the same day.
I believe they're both on the 12th.
Yeah, they're both on Wednesday.
One work session.
And I'm going to be attending those as well.
Yeah, okay.
Boy, I am so teetering on this one. I mean, I hear, I hear both arguments. I think Commissioner Baker made a strong argument for leaving it alone.
I agree.
And, you know, when the time, when and if a metro plan amendment is initiated, then there is plenty of time then for public comment and we could comment as individuals, we could comment as a commission to public comment, couldn't we?
Well, you will be forwarding a recommendation.
Right. And it will become before this body. So, you know, at this point, I'm, just because of the, again, the idea of potential appeals and the fact that everything that they will have will be in the packet, I think I'm leaning against. Unless somebody else wants to make another case to sway me back because it's that close.
Commissioner Mills?
I just want to emphasize that I'm not questioning the motivations here at all. And I'm not questioning the integrity or the ability to generate an unbiased statement. What I'm really worried about is the integrity of what we do and our integrity to be perceived as unbiased deliberators. And I'm just really afraid that it's just going to open the door and weaken our ability to respond. And I share the same frustration. We oftentimes send things up and it doesn't seem like they're oftentimes, sometimes, I shouldn't say oftentimes, that's a misstatement, that sometimes they're not sufficiently deliberated by city council. But, you know, that's their job. And I think the fact that the chair is willing to be there and that staff will be there is what we, is more than we normally rely on. And I think anything more than that, we risk what I believe Commissioner Baker has already stated. So I'm sticking with a no vote.
And I have myself in the queue before Commissioner Belcher. And I guess, you know, city council has the ability to disagree with us too, just like we have the ability to disagree among ourselves. And that's the democratic process and that's how this all works. And so I hear that. I understand that. I'm actually starting to lean toward erring on the side of caution. And, you know, I'm hearing a pretty strong sentiment that we not send along an executive summary. And I'm leaning that way. I echo Commissioner Borowski's concerns. I think, just, I don't want to muddy any waters. And, you know, I appreciate the desire to communicate and I would put forth the request for council buddies one more time in this meeting or some means of communication and relationship, you know, that we could have with council. But right now, I'm leaning against. But Commissioner Belcher?
Well, in the immortal words of ex-Commissioner Karnakia, I can count to three. So it's pretty clear that we're not going to be sending a summary, but I hope that the commission still supports having Commissioner Randall present to answer any questions.
And I am completely open to do that. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I think it's just a prudent way to proceed. And I, the other thing I think we could go forward with is, in the future, if we think it's important to have an executive summary that is attached to our recommendations, then we just do it as a matter of course. We don't do it responding to something that happens after the fact. Because then it's just nice and clean, you know, we've done our job, we've passed something to them and, you know, done our diligence. And, you know, we make decisions very often based on quasi-legal issues about what the exact code, you know. They're making political decisions where they might change that code. So they don't have the, they have a lot more freedom in terms of decision-making that we do. So they could very well make a different decision because they weren't under the same existing rules and regulations that we're theoretically operating under. So that's just the way it works from my point of view.
I think I saw Commissioner Belcher, then Commissioner Borowski.
Well, I don't think we had that option because we made a decision on a quasi-judicial issue that didn't go to the commission after, or the council after we were done. So there was no opportunity to send an executive decision to the council. And I'll be careful, but I'll say it seems surprising to me that the council would be looking at this decision before a quasi-judicial process was completed too. But having said that, I'll say no more.
Okay. Well, I certainly will make myself available for the February 12th work session. I think I will not make public comment at the Monday session. I think that, judging from what I'm hearing, I think that would be inappropriate.
I agree.
And, yeah. And so with that, we will, I guess, that pretty much, I think, decides it.
We're just talking about the Benson right now, right?
Well, we-
The hearings are both the same.
I know.
Both the same. But, yeah, we were focused mostly on Benson. Are there questions about the single-family code amendment?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I still think that there's an opportunity for us to weigh in on single-family. Single-family's not a quasi-judicial. It's a recommendation that was sent to the city council from this body with a recommendation. This is our recommendations. I think that, and then during a public forum, citizen members got up and made assertions regarding those recommendations and the code amendments. And I think it would be our duty to point out where we address those situations and some of the consequences that those things had. I mean, it seemed to me that one of the, and I don't have the letter in front of me from the neighborhood associations, but it seemed to me, one of the things, for example, was the density calculation, right? And that was one of the things that we discussed here quite a bit. And one of the things that I think that was brought up when we were talking about density calculation was the notification factor. And that if we were to change that density, we would have to notify every property in the city. Wasn't that, don't I remember something about that?
It was regarding minimum lot size for secondary dwellings. And if you were to reduce that, depending on where you reduced it, you know, how far down it would go. I mean, there was, I think, up to five to six thousand lots that then would no longer qualify for a secondary dwelling. And so those individual property owners would need to be noticed.
Right. So, I mean, those are things that I think, you know, those were things that were brought up in our deliberation but aren't there. And so those are things that when the, and those were some of the things that were brought up before council in the public forum that they said, well, let's postpone this rather than, and have a work session on it rather than move forward with it at that time. So I think it's, my feeling is as a planning commissioner, I would like them to know that, hey, we looked at that. We discussed that. And the ramifications of if they decide, oh, yeah, we want to change that density, letting them know what those ramifications are, that that's going to mean we're going to, we're going to put out, we're going to have to notify another six thousand people. We're going to have to have another public, I remember if we were going to change that here, one of the things that made the discussion move along was the fact that that would mean another public hearing and reopening the record and all of those things. So I think these things are important to send along to council for their deliberations on this. I mean, I think that we look at what was brought up and some of the concerns that council had that were brought forward by the neighborhood and point out to them where and how we made our decisions.
Carolyn?
I just wanted folks to know that we are preparing a response to the issues, the primary issues that we heard during the public hearing. And correct me if I'm wrong, Alyssa, I don't think we get into that amount of detail in our responses. I think we provide a little bit more broader. And so there could be a place, if the commission desired to provide more of that detailed nuance about your deliberations regarding those specific issues that might otherwise not be addressed.
Commissioner Baker?
Again, I feel uncomfortable about this because I think, you know, we're making, we make, you know, we presented a set of facts and we go through a long deliberation and we submit material to the council, which we did. And the staff will be there to resolve, you know, if questions come up about this, they'll be, I'm sure that staff will tell them that if the slot size was changed, then six thousand. But the point is, we're not supposed to be sort of like advocating for, you know, we make recommendations. We're not supposed to be like attorneys arguing our case. I just don't think that's appropriate for the planning commission. In other words, you know, we do a body of work and we pass it all to them. And then the staff is there to answer questions. They'll answer it based on what we've discussed. But as soon as we start, you know, getting involved in as advocates and, you know, making a case for our decision, I really think that we've fallen down as a purpose of our commission. That's not our job. We're not supposed to be attorneys for some point of view that we, you know, we may have espoused during our meeting. You know, that's just, it just doesn't seem right to me. You know, we're, you know, we're supposed to be, you know, more, you know, slow deliberating, you know, we're not supposed to be attorneys advertising, you know, advocating for a specific issue or whatever. And, you know, it's not like the information isn't going to be passed to them. Staff will be there. They have our recommendations, you know, the recommendations and the votes, the votes, you know, because some people didn't agree with that, you know, some people disagreed with Commissioner Belcher's perspective. So, you know, that's already represented there. I just think if we start getting involved in sort of day-to-day issues at the city council when some planning issue comes up that we, you know, we weighed in on recently, we're just going down a really bad path.
Commissioner Mills?
Again, I just think it's fine. If we feel that it's important to have executive summaries, then we make, when we make the decision, we put that as one of the characteristics that we want staff to develop and review. And then it's a done deal. It's done as part of the process, not external, you know, related to other circumstances. So would we be doing this if there wasn't complaints at the public hearing about some of the issues? No. Well, to me, again, it says the same thing. We are responding to public concerns now, not to, you know, the, you know, the level of issues that we were supposed to consider at the meeting.
Commissioner Mills?
I'm feeling like one of the things that we're discussing here is fairly fundamental in terms of the process. One of the things I'm sensing from Commissioner Borowski is that there may be some cases where statements have been made or characterizations have been put forth that are in conflict with our perception and that one of the things that would feel good would be able to, quote, "set the record straight." Well, this is what really happened. And I understand that motivation, but that would be a change. And I'm also, I guess I would tell you that I'm relying on staff to make sure that they're straight scoop what happened. Within the best of their abilities is what's relayed to city council. So if there's two characterizations and they're in opposition and staff was in both, present or was where both, you know, they're going to give the straight-up opinion about what that is and I'll live with that. I'm accepting that. So I'm sympathetic to what Commissioner Borowski is stating, but I guess I'm feeling like I don't want to, I'm hesitating to embark upon a change in practice, which is what this feels like it is.
Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I think our role is to advise the council. And what we're proposing to do is indeed advise the council. The fact that we're preparing an executive summary now rather than when we terminated our discussion, to me, is little different. And I do think there is value in the council hearing what we have to say, and this is our only mechanism for doing it. So I support the executive summary.
Or the single-family code amendments.
The single-family code. We've already decided on Benson.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, for me, I mean, I don't necessarily feel like, you know, I want to set the record straight, although I just would like to make sure that council has the information that they need to make a proper decision. And as far as Commissioner Baker, you know, what I feel, one of my duties is as a commissioner, is to go through all the weeds and listen to all the, you know, I mean, that's what we do. We sit in here for hours on end going through the minutia, especially when it comes to code writing, you know. There's no, to me, there's no real opportunity at a 45-minute work session of eight counselors and a mayor to write code. And sometimes I think it happens and I don't know, and then that's me personally, back away. I don't know if that's right or wrong. But I think that our, my duty as a planning commissioner is give them the recommendation of another deliberative body. And so they're getting ready to have a work session on this to move forward and approve these code amendments. And they have gotten more information from other areas, not in a public hearing, but in a public forum. It was at a, it was the public forum, because that meeting was a, it was a Monday night meeting and there was a public forum. And they, the information was brought forward in a public forum before the, I believe.
Okay. Well, I certainly, I'm not sure, but I certainly know there was a public hearing within the number of years, right?
And there was, yeah. And there was a public hearing as well.
There may very well have been additional testimony in public forum. And since, because it's legislative, that's okay.
So, you know, at this point, whether we do an executive summary or not, that would be fine. What I would hope was that if it's possible to get that, what the staff is going to produce and give to them, if we could get that before the Monday public forum in case I wanted to speak as an individual at the public forum and put three minutes out there on my own and say, these are some of the things that I- and say, these are some of the things that I think would be good for you to know. I would appreciate that.
You could certainly send out the AIS packet to all of you. That's been a request in the past anyway, so we could definitely do that.
And you think that'll be ready before Monday?
I think it goes out Friday.
Okay. That would be helpful.
I would appreciate that. I know, and Alyssa, you had a comment.
And we will be sending out, I mean, as part of the agenda items summary, there's a memo that does go through, as Carolyn said, some of those primary issues that were raised in testimony. I can go back through, for instance, under the density and make sure that the PC's conversation is at least summarized under that. And if you guys feel comfortable, maybe you could let me know which other topics you feel really strongly about that you want to make sure, or I can just, if you don't want to bring them up, I can go back through where the straw votes were, those where there were, there were some where there was, you know, it was more of a split vote, and I can flesh that out and put that into the memo.
And I think that's, I know my concern, I mean, when we make a recommendation and it's unanimous, I have less concern. But when we have a recommendation that is a split vote, I think it's important to get that information to council, just so that they know that, you know, some of the things that we deliberated on and how we decided, whether, you know, whether I'm on the winning end or the losing end of that, I, you know, that's not the issue. The issue is to communicate that, and that we, you know, we struggled with it, you know, because I think that what that does is that then conveys to council that, you know, hey, we struggled on this particular topic, and so, you know, there's, you know, maybe some room there. I think from my perspective, I'm happy either doing an executive summary or having the staff AIS maybe fleshed out a little more on that. It might actually, just my gut feeling, it might be more effective if it were the staff AIS fleshed out a little more than an executive summary. Perhaps not, but that's just kind of the way I'm leaning. So Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I do think it's critical to look at those straw votes that were split and share both sides of those issues particularly. And the question of lot size based on density was one of those that was, I think it was a four-three split, so yes, please focus on those. And a chair-reviewed executive position versus an executive summary, I can go either way.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I think it's better if we just, I mean, again, staff is going to answer these questions. And again, then it's not the case where we're only jumping in because of some controversy that came up, in other words. And in the future, going forward, we can resolve this issue, that we will make sure that we prepare executive summaries with our findings and pass them on, and it could even be on quasi-judicial. We could send them a little note, and, you know, if we think it's important for them to be aware of what went on, then we do that. But if we do that as part of our normal process, it doesn't look foreign. It doesn't look like, why are they getting involved now after the process is already over? After their deliberations are done? You know, when we made our findings and the staff, you know, documented them and noted the straw votes, you know, why are we getting involved now, not three months ago or two months ago or whatever? It doesn't looks, you know, it just doesn't look kosher, you know, because of the timing.
I think from my perspective, on a quasi-judicial decision, I have more pause there just because of the level that that's at. And I know that the particular Benson issue didn't actually, it wasn't quasi-judicial to council, and so there's some, you know, struggle there, I guess. On the legislative, though, with the single-family code amendments, I have less concern with the communication because it is looser, I know, in our testimony and when we take additional comments from people in that, when it's related to a legislative issue, there's less concern about ex parte contact and, you know, all of that stuff. In fact, on legislative issues, I think we want that and welcome that information. And so I think from that perspective, I have less concern about crafting some additional information in that to go to council for the single-family code amendments. So I think that's, you know, that's kind of the way I tend to parse out those decisions. Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I agree. I think legislative, it's incumbent upon us to share our thoughts. Quasi-judicial, there are very few quasi-judicial issues that come from, that initiate here and go to council, one of which is street change names, street name changes. So I never would have conceived that the council would consider taking this issue up, especially when it's still before a little bit, so I don't see why we would even thought of sending it to them. But I do think it's important on issues that are not quasi-judicial but legislative.
Okay. Commissioner Mills, and then I think Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I guess I would say that, two things. First, I still have some hesitation, even though we're legislative and not quasi-judicial, just in terms of, once again, potential appeals. So I have some reservation. But having said that, I would be supportive of a fleshed-out AIS with straw poll information in that for the city council to consider. So I think that's a good idea.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, and I think the staff, you know, the staff, who would have done this anyways, because they were supposed to convey that information. I think that's the appropriate mechanism, because how do you write an executive summary when there's a four-to-three vote? In other words, does a majority write the executive summary and approve it? In other words, it's not, it's not representative. It's representative of the majority, but it doesn't convey all of the nuances.
I think you can convey the information and what the vote was and still just present it. I mean, you know...
Right, but that's why I think it's better for staff to do that, because they're presenting all of this information, all the things that were discussed, and I just think, again, if we think it's important to have executive summaries, you should do it as part of the regular process, not do it after the fact because of some external stimuli that all of a sudden forces, thinks, forces or convinces some planning commissioners that it's needed now. That doesn't seem right. Just seems like now we're arguing for our position where we're just supposed to be looking at things deliberately and making recommendations, and we understand that some of those are accepted and some of those aren't. It's, you know, we don't make decisions, all we do is recommend. And so that just seems the proper way to do this. Write an executive summary if it's important to have it, and then, and if they ask us questions, by all means, we answer. And if they ask staff questions, which they always do, staff will answer, you know, on our behalf about what we discussed and what, you know, what our considerations were and what, you know, that's their role. You know, our role is not to be seated at the table there answering questions for them, unless they ask us.
Commissioner Borowski, then Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I guess I'm fine with being able to preview the AIS, and maybe we could send an, if we see something in there that we feel, if I see something in there that I feel might need more explanation, I could submit that, it could go through all of this, and I don't know if there's any way to put it in there or not. Again, probably the staff's presentation will be fine, but there may be spot. For me, I mean, the things that I, again, and I don't have the document in front of me, if I did, I'd go right to it, but, you know, there were things that were represented, you know, the density was one of them. The number of alley access lots that are actually eligible for that was a contentious item. And then the other thing that I remember, and this was in a, as I recall, it was in a op-ed in the Register-Guard, about 20-foot looming walls, five-feet setbacks. And so I know that one of our contentious, I think it was a four-three vote, was on the setbacks. And so I think that that one definitely needs to have as much information as staff can convey about what our feelings around that were. You know, I'm not saying that they have to advocate for one thing or another, but I just want to make sure that the information that we struggled with and discussed and the reasonings why we came to a recommendation of one way or another is there if council wants it, especially if they're thinking of changing setbacks or changing, taking alley access lots off the table or whatever, you know. Let them have, make sure that they have that information so they can make the best decision that they can. That's all that I'm hoping for. I'm not, I don't want to sit there and advocate for one thing or another as a body. I just want them to know that we've looked at these and these were what we found. That's all.
Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I agree. I think we need to at least make clear what our deliberation was and give them the benefit of the doubt. Council's very busy. They deal with issues from homelessness to...
Fireworks.
Fireworks, thank you. And we have the luxury of taking more time to look at these issues and deliberate them more carefully. I will say that in my eleven-and-a-half years as a planning commissioner, our communication with the city council is at the lowest it's ever been. We no longer have annual work sessions, we no longer have council buddies, and I think we need to have some discussion in the commission about how we can better communicate with council. One of those may be always sending up an executive summary on a legislative issue. Another may be to reach out to council and ask them how we can better communicate with them. But I think what my frustration is about is that lack of being able to communicate and try and find a way to do so.
And I think I'll jump into the queue myself, because I think those are some of my concerns also, is just the level of communication from commission to council. And being able to have that two-way communication, I think is, I think is important. I think with the decisions we recommend, I think, especially with Envision Eugene and a lot of the stuff that's coming down the line, to be able to have better communication with council on some of the whys of our decisions, not just the black and white facts that come through a summary. I think that's, you know, something that I would love to see. I think the summary that is here with the single-family code amendments, as fleshed out with some of those straw votes and some of the information as far as, you know, who was in favor, who wasn't, especially on some of the split votes, is good.
Did I send you that? I'm not sure that you all have it.
I think you did. No, I think you did, and then I forwarded that.
Okay. At the public hearing, we did provide, and so I just wanted, just to clear...
Yeah, yeah. And to me, that's basically an executive summary. You know, I think really in the single-family code amendments, this pretty much gets at an executive summary. I think it may need just a little bit more.
Okay.
And I think it's what I'm doing.
So, yeah, on the front side, it says you voted unanimously to recommend approval of them, subject to the following modifications, and there's a straw vote for all of those. And then the backside says you also talked about other topics. These motions didn't pass. Here's what those were, and here's what the votes were, and generally why those in favor voted, and why those in opposition voted the way they did.
Yeah, and I think what my initial concern was is one of the packets that I downloaded from council, the original one, I guess maybe it was...
The original work session, we didn't have all of that additional information. They actually had requested it as well, so that's why it came up at the public hearing. We're proposing to attach it. But I think for some of these that were definitely have been raised over and over in testimony, I will pull this information into my memo, which I, hoping you guys don't want to read, because it's, I think, the deadline's today at 5:00 for that. So I think they just requested to see it before Monday. Before Monday. Okay. Excellent.
There's something in there that we want to speak to as a citizen, not as a planning commissioner.
Excellent. You can even speak as an individual planning commissioner.
Yeah. I think we just need to be careful in times like that, that we make clear that we're representing ourselves, not the entire commission, unless we're representing the entire commission, which apparently that's my job.
Yeah, that's your job.
At least this year. So is that then satisfactory, I think, for, oh, I think Commissioner Belcher?
I did have... Please state what you plan to do.
Okay. What I plan on doing is showing up at the council work session on the 12th, being available for questions should I be asked, would love to be asked questions related to some of the topics we've discussed, and just be available for that. Commissioner Belcher?
And staff will state that he's there for that purpose.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's your third time, you've missed me, Chairman.
I'm sorry. I wasn't writing things down today, and I should have.
Okay, I'm probably being hypersensitive, but I wanted to follow up on what Commissioner Belcher said about our communication with the city council and in support of his concern. And having been here now, this is my, going into my sixth year, it has generally declined. And one of the things that I see as having contributed to that necessarily was the processes put in place for Envision Eugene, which tended to bypass this body. I know I felt bypassed a number of times. And I understand the reasons for them happening, but we're now coming out of that, and I guess I would task Manager Ruiz to consider our role and to help us improve the communication. And I know I'm talking to you to talk to your bosses, boss, boss, or however that works, and that's limited. We also have Counselor Brown here in the audience, and I think that, you know, some people need to step up if they think this is a relevant point, and I got to believe John does, that something needs to be done about it, because we can sit here and complain about it, but some of the other folks in charge need to be, come involved in that too, whether it's a work session, annual work session, which I think is a very good idea, council buddies, which I've never seen work in my time on the council. We all talk about it on the commission. We all talk about it, but it's never worked since I've been here, and that's going on six years.
Carolyn, did you have a comment?
Sure. Just my comments on that issue, I hear you, and I understand the frustration. I do, so regarding the annual work session, I think that was primarily built around determining the work plan for the planning commission and the planning division, and that has been basically subsumed by Envision Eugene. And we had our own work session to make sure that planning commission understood everything that we were doing, which was basically directed to us by the city council when they accepted the Envision Eugene recommendation. We look forward to the day when there is discretion in our work plan and when we can once again resume those coordinated work discussions. Do want to remind that planning commission did have a seat at the table with the city council when we were bringing the Envision Eugene recommendation forward. There were one, two, or two, or maybe even three meetings with the planning commission and the city council in the McNutt Room, where we were kind of sitting in a big circle.
I remember there was more people here than just the planning commission and the city council in those.
There were also some...
There was a bunch of other bodies participating also.
Okay. Could be. But I think there was, I don't, I just don't want that overlooked, and I will absolutely, as we move your recommendations to the city council based on Envision Eugene, I will commit to looking at how we can have some more in-depth interactions.
Commissioner Belcher, then Commissioner Baker?
Everything you say is true, and I understand the situation we find ourselves in. But my experience with most of the work sessions we had with city council around the work plan, it was about 5% work plan and 95% relationship building and getting feedback back and forth. That's what I miss.
Mr. Baker?
Well, I was just going to comment, I think if in the future we do attach executive summaries to our deliberations for the city council, that would be helpful to them, because then they wouldn't have a long record to, I mean, they still have to read a long record, but it just, it starts to convey information in a way we're used to in the corporate world. You know, you might have a 10 or 12-page paper, but you've got a one-page summary or a half-page summary. I think that would be helpful in facilitating communication between ourselves and the city council. Also, I think we have to learn how to let go. No, I'm serious. In other words, if you, once you make a decision and, you know, someone else changes it, whether it's, you know, another, somebody else up the chain, whatever, you know, we just, you know, we did what we thought was reasonable to time. That might change over time, you know, that's just the way it is. And we have to learn to let go of those, you know, once we've, you know, once we've sent our stuff on, we are, you know, we are out of that one until it comes back again for whatever reason. That's just the way it is. And I think that's an important thing that we develop as commissioners, is the ability to let go.
And I have myself in the queue too. I was going to make a comment... And I have myself in the queue too, I was going to make a comment, and really, I think if, if nothing else out of this meeting, I think it maybe should be clear to city council that we desire more and better communication. And, and I think Commissioner Belcher summed it up well with just building relationship. You know, I think we can feel detached, I think, from that quite a bit, because of not having some means to, to build that relationship. I, I do want to respond to the, to the letting go comment, though, and I think if we had a good, solid communication and relationship with council, I think it would be easier to let go. I think there's a concern, at least in my mind, that we're making recommendations and maybe they're not always heard, or vetted, or really given the consideration that we feel they should be given. I think if there were some mechanism in place, council buddies, I think that's the third time now this meeting I've mentioned that, or some means of communication, I think it would really help me be able to let go, because then I would know that I was at least heard, and, you know, the consideration made. And I know in this body, if I'm on the losing end of a vote, I'm fine with it, I own it, and I move on. But I feel like we've had that ability to discuss and communicate, but if that isn't at least perceived to be there, whether it is or not, if it's not perceived to be there, then I have a little more trouble letting go. But, Commissioner Belcher.
I think you much more eloquently said what I was going to say, but I would also like to thank the members of this commission and their willingness to state their opinion and hear each other. I always feel that's the case. Thank you.
Commissioner Borowski.
Well, this kind of makes me feel like, so before my tenure on the planning commission, I had extended tenure on the budget committee. And, and so, I can relate this to kind of how staff must feel when they present the budget. So, staff goes through and spends months and months developing a budget, and presents it to the budget committee. And then, a roomful of people stands up and says, "Don't cut my pools." Right? And, and then the budget committee talks about, "Well, we can't cut their pools," staff, and makes a vote, and negates the months of, of planning that, that staff has done. And that, so now I, I know how finance staff feels. Because that must be exactly the same type of feeling that we get when we do all of this work, and then people stand up at a, a public forum or at a, at a thing, and council says, "Well, you can't close their pools." You know, so, now I have a little bit more empathy for, for finance staff.
I'll pass that along.
And we are grateful for your service on the budget committee, actually.
And I was the one that was saying, "Don't close the pool."
Well, I think we've probably wrapped up this discussion, and I want to thank the commission for coming today and just sharing your opinions and your thoughts, and, and that. I think if nothing else, this was a good time of communicating, you know, if, if nothing else. And staff, thank you for making this possible. And with that, unless there's other issues.
I just have a couple more things.
Couple, okay.
So, just as far as things from commissioners, I will be attending a CDBG committee meeting tomorrow night. I'm the, I'm one of the representatives from the planning commission on that, and they're going through the RFPs for the grants that have come through for the community development block grants. And then, the Envision Eugene thing today, do you want to say anything about that, or?
I would just say that the city manager is bringing together a group of community members to kind of, I guess I would say, take the pulse of the community on where we are with Envision Eugene and check in, because you guys have been very involved in Envision Eugene, and so have various stakeholder groups, but kind of the broader sense, and so it's kind of a just informational meeting.
That's this afternoon.
And on the 11th, I think, are we meeting before the 11th? Do we have a meeting scheduled on the 10th?
No, we do not. Have a meeting on the 10th, and the 17th is a holiday, and so our next meeting is February 24th on the Community Design Guide.
I will be attending on the 11th a TCRG meeting on Eugene TSP, and I think Commissioner Mills will, and Commissioner Belcher. I think the three of us are the liaisons or whatever our title or role is on that, and that's on the 11th. And I think.
So, we don't have a planning commission meeting next?
The Design Guide.
We do not have a planning commission meeting next Monday.
No.
Nor on the 17th.
And then there's a Community Design Guide that I think.
Yeah.
But that's, I think, just a couple of us.
That's the subgroup.
Just a couple of us are going to be attending that, so, I forget the date. Lou, Lou got us those dates.
It's the 10th, or somewhere in there, but.
Could, oh, yeah, I think it may be the same, same days.
It's around, around that time.
Somewhere in there. Okay. So, we're doing other things also?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, with that, if there's no other business from staff or from commission, we'll let you guys get to your meeting, and we're adjourned.